Hear about it.
That's the rest of the story.
Oh, okay.
As Paul Harvey would say.
We were just like, we just had a meeting this week and we're like going over all these policy changes and all these other things. Yeah, well, that's a good one to go over then.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I could have seen if I could log on to Beacon and show the property that I own. But, I mean, really, that's what I'm gonna lie about? Of all the things in the world that I'm gonna, I'm gonna.
They never asked, they never asked me.
And he lives outside the county or city.
Well, that's, that was that rule that they put in if you own property, because what the city said is, well, their property tax. Well, first I said, well, I live in the rural areas, if I come in, I pay sales tax, which pays for the city. Like while, but that doesn't go by the city property tax, it does. So I said, if you own, I was on the board of that time, so if you own property in the city, you should be given.
Louis, do you want a copy of this? Louis.
Any of you, any of you want a copy of?
It's up there. They're up there.
Grab one if you want, that's what we're gonna discuss.
Sounds like it should be like, it should be a little easier to.
To get a library card. And the lady that I was talking to first passed me off to this guy. Because I don't know if he's just new or they're just wanting, but they don't have to worry about me getting a library card now.
No. Okay, we got, we got library cards, like, we don't have a property in town, so I guess.
Time is, uh, am I on? Time is three thirty. I'd like to call a meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Take, please take role.
Wanda.
Here.
Dan.
Here.
Ryan.
Here.
John.
Here.
Don.
Here. Thank you. Thank you, folks, for coming. The purpose of this meeting is to talk about probably three areas. First one will be areas for strategic planning in the county. What, what I'd like to do is go through this list of items that, that are on this list and add any that, any of the commission wants to add.
Don.
If some of you have some item that you want to add, bring it on. No, okay, I'll get to that.
I think they like you to do it first.
Whatever. Does anybody have a reason to abstain?
I do not.
I do not.
No.
I move to approve the agenda.
Thank you.
Second.
I want an addition to the agenda. We usually have public comment before and after, so I'd just like to add another public, public comment period at the end. Because that's what we usually do.
Sorry, I didn't put it.
No, that's, that's fine, and then.
I would move to withdraw my first motion to approve and move to approve the agenda with a second public comment after the commission expectations and organization discussion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Most same, most carries. Okay.
Now we're up to public comment.
Does anybody have a public comment?
There's none back here.
Okay. Having none, we'll start then with the commission expectations and organization. We'll probably talk about three different areas. But the first one that I'd like to spend the majority of the time on is areas for strategic planning in Yankton County. And basically, that would include areas which we see a need for some improvement, something that would, would, would be a benefit to our customers in the county. So if any of the commissioners want to add an item to this list, they're certainly welcome to. And if anybody in the public wants to add an item to the list, I'm sure you're welcome that too. Any questions?
Don, do you want to go through this list? Or do you want to go and then have discussion on that and go to the next one? How do you want to?
I'm gonna start out with.
Do you want to make a copy? Another one?
I'm gonna start out with the areas of strategic planning and I'll just read down through the list and see what we need to add on there. Ambulance services, economic growth and development, county HR manager, county manager, roads, team building, detention services, jail, value-added agriculture, planning and zoning, financial planning, county shared responsibilities, veteran services, manufacturing, tourism, and housing. Does anybody have an item that they would like to add to that list? Commissioners?
I'd, I'd like maybe government transparency on there and then I would like to, I don't know if I see it on there or not. It could probably go under that, kind of like an IT or just utilizing technology to reach the citizens, I guess, I don't know, better way to say that, but tech, yeah.
Advanced application of technology.
Exactly, yep.
Does anybody in the public want to add an item to it? Long time ago, when I was working at my former job, our organization was in a little bit of financial difficulty and our CEO hauled everybody into Omaha and gave them a list of twenty-eight strategic plans. Well, there's absolutely no way a group can adequately do twenty-eight strategic plans. So what I, what I'd like to do is take this list and have a general discussion and select four of the most important ones that we see that we should invest our time and effort on, for a starter. So I think the best way to, to do that is I'll go down through the list and I'll, I'll, I'll put a check if somebody sees, sees the ambulance service as one.
I do.
Okay, just give me a second. And then we'll go on to the, the second item, this check, and we'll total up the first top four.
Okay.
So ambulance service.
Me.
Yeah, I, I think that's absolutely.
Two?
Something that needs to be.
I agree.
Four?
Needs to be.
Because I'm, I'm agreeing on that. Anybody else? Economic development and growth.
I'd have to approve that one.
I, I would have to say yes, but I think the, the way that they're looking at economic growth and development is different than in the past. It used to be bring businesses in.
Who's they?
Just, I'm speaking generally.
Oh.
On, on the research that I've, I've done is now we have seven hun, what, seven hundred jobs in Yankton that are open within the state. It's twenty thousand. So the talk now is affordable housing first, because you can have all the open jobs that you want, but if you can't find anybody to fill them, what, what good is? We could have a new factory in tomorrow and nobody working there, not gonna do us any good. So I think those two go hand in hand, and I, I hate to skip around on you, but I, I think affordable housing may, maybe should come.
And.
And economic development.
And I, I agree with that, Dan. I think that's an important part about it. But what I was thinking about economic growth and development was the things that the county might be able to do to promote economic growth and development. Which would include housing.
Yeah, okay.
County HR manager. I guess I'm the only one.
Nope, I would agree with that.
Okay, accounting manager. I would agree with that. Roads.
I, I think that's a, I, I agree with the roads being an important issue. That, that goes back to that economic growth and, and development, you know? That's like the first, the first layer of making sure that we can pave the way for that development is making sure that our roads are good.
I'm a fan of roads.
Yeah.
You're, you're on with roads.
I like roads.
I'll, I'll put me down for that one too.
Me too.
Only thing I'd challenge you on, on roads is that we have a five-year plan and I think our two.
Well, you asked us what we thought was important. I think they're important. I'm not saying that has to be more important than economic development. Because I think, again, it's, that's something that goes hand in hand with housing.
Yes.
Next one is team building. I see a, in my experience here with the county, I see a definite need for team building between the department heads of the county, between the people that work on, under the departments. We need to, we need to work together instead of kind of being separate. Silos. Detention services.
I think we need to do something about the money that we're paying to house juvenile delinquents.
I agree with that.
There is, Gary, correct me if I'm wrong, there is gonna be a detention study this summer from the legislature. The state realizes this is a huge issue and I believe several states attorneys, the county commission association has three county commissioners on it. So it's being, it's being studied. I agree, something needs to be done, but the way the law is written right now, the counties will do this and will do that. We can say we don't want it to, but we don't have a lot of say in that.
No.
So it's important, yes, but what can we do about it?
Not if the judge.
Yeah.
The judge says this is what. Well, the thing, the thing that came to my mind is perhaps rather than paying Sioux Falls two hundred and seventy-eight dollars a day, we could possibly look at alternatives within the community and attempt to get an organization with five to seven neighboring counties to run the detention program rather than shipping everybody to Sioux Falls.
Or, or talk to the governor and see what we can do about utilizing HSC, which has at least four empty wards, which, they're locked doors, that's what juveniles need.
I spoke with the sheriff the other day on the possibility of using ankle monitor bracelets instead of shipping these people to Sioux Falls, and that may be a difference. I'd rather pay twelve dollars a day, you don't think that's an option?
I don't think so.
Well, I can tell you that I had one and it was good for a couple of weeks and then he cut it off and ran.
You, you yourself had.
When you're, when you're locked up, you don't get to run.
She, she mentioned he, so.
Well, I don't, I don't think it's a gold, I don't think it's a golden key, but it may be another step before sending them. It could be part of the JDI.
If you were unfortunate enough to participate in juvenile hearings in Yankton County, I think you would find that judge doesn't put you in, put them in Sioux Falls unless she's run out of options. She's run out of house arrest, she's run out of diversion, she's run out of probation. These are the ones that can't be trusted, crawl out the window at night, commit crimes. Eight years old, smoking what meth? I mean, these are the ones that are not the best of the best.
Next item that I had on the list was jail, the jail operations.
I think right now the jail's doing okay.
Is there any concern about the new jail in Sioux Falls or anything like that that would change that in the future, you think?
The new jail or the prison?
Or the prisons and stuff, I don't know.
No, well, what, what would, if they put another prison in Sioux Falls, but my understanding is they want to knock down the Pink Granite Prison to put up a handicap accessible prison. We already have the Jameson Annex, which is handicap accessible and where we keep our death row inmates, which are just one at this time.
The ideas that I was thinking about when I put the jail down were an information provided by NECO stating the, what you do with pre-trial. Is there a ways that you can change pre-trial?
Most everybody that's, with the exception of the gentleman from Scotland that's gonna be moving here because the trial's gonna be here and the gentleman that allegedly shot his girlfriend, those two people are here for a long term. Most everybody else gets out on bond, either secured or unsecured bond. Other than federal prisoners, they stay and the government pays us for those. But we don't have a problem with an overabundance of long-termers there.
Good. I think they were talking about trying to get the short-termers out too.
They do.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, if, you are entitled to a bond hearing at any time. The only person who is not entitled to bond are people who are possible punishment of death, life in prison, or a danger to the community or who have no ties here. So if judge says five thousand dollars cash or surety, you either come up with five thousand cash or you find somebody to put five thousand up for cash or you get a bondsman for which you pay ten percent as his fee. Almost everybody gets out. Most people get out the first time around on personal recognizance, even if they're dealing meth.
Okay.
Most people.
We can easily cross that one off. Nobody voted in favor of that one. Value-added agriculture.
I would be in favor of looking at something there.
That kind of goes with economic growth and development.
Yeah, it kind of falls under that again. It's just a different area or more specific than the, the general economic growth and development.
Yeah, I think so. The, the large percentage of the county's major industry is, is agriculture. And my opinion is that we have not done as good a job on promoting agriculture as we, as we could in the county. And.
Can we put that as a subdivision of economic growth?
Sure. Planning and zoning.
This one is, again, it's like a very general one, but I think it falls, there's so many different things on the list here that fall under planning and zoning too, in a sense. It touches on planning and zoning, you know, economic development, roads, tourism, housing. They all kind of fall back into that one, so it's another one of those umbrellas.
Ryan, the thing that, I guess, the thing that scares me is if we make that economic development such a large category. You know, we've got, we've got planning and zoning, there's, in my opinion, there's a number of things that should be reviewed more frequently than, than we review them. We've got a changing economy, there's changing demands, we should be responding to them sooner. And what, what our planning and zoning generally applies to, how, how do we look at making sure the law is enforced?
Yeah.
The ordinance is enforced, and I'm okay with that, but I would like to expand that. And, and again, you're right, that does go up to the economic development.
And, and I agree too, yeah. It's, we gotta look at enforcement, we have to look at how we can streamline our planning and zoning laws so that they're more clear. And then that falls back into supporting some of these other things. I mean, in a sense, I think that's very important because it's such a broad category, touches on a lot of these.
I got, what was the rest of yours on planning and zoning? How do you, did you feel?
I think I agree with Ryan in the fact that we need to identify, maybe and so with economic development. What do we want? We take our top four and we focus on that and then we move on to the next four, after that next four. Because if, like you said, Don, if we have twenty-eight top economic development proposals, we're gonna get lost in the sauce. So I, I think we need to get a little more of a focus on there, like Ryan said. And, you know, I think part of it is we'll look at the zoning applications that, you know, we're getting, whether it's variances or, or housing. I, I know one example we had when we had that housing development come to the lake, you know, with all those duplexes and, and we found a reason to make it difficult for them and guess what? Now it's getting built. Maybe that's an area where we tweak just a little bit, one or two sentences, and then we could have made that work and it would have been built now instead of it being built.
I disagree that we made it difficult for them.
I'm not, yeah, I, I'm not trying to cause problems.
And the reason is because they wanted to put a whole bunch of people in a very concentrated area. And.
But we, but we.
Wouldn't work.
But we approved that same thing, but they went through a rezone and went to a PUD. So the same proposal is going in the same footprint, but we just delayed it.
All they did was follow the law.
Yeah.
I mean, I would like to do things that the law doesn't approve of. Like there are days I'd feel like driving a hundred miles an hour, but gee, the law says I'm supposed to be limited to eighty.
Okay, so.
Um, but can we maybe task in order to get potential changes to the county commission for zoning, task the planning and zoning committee if they see something coming that they think would be helpful?
I think we need.
That they bring it to our attention so we can get it done.
Wanda, I've got it on the agenda for the March meeting, Gary, to discuss exactly that.
There we go, great minds.
Think alike, right?
Well, they, they're, they're in contact with a lot more of the, the community than I am or any one of us probably are and want their input on what things that they think need to be changed. So that's kind of in the process.
Okay.
Financial planning.
What do you mean by that?
I guess that's a pretty general thing applicable to the whole county. How, how do we, how do we adequately plan? When, when do we need to borrow money? Those kind of things. What are the ratios that we want to keep? What are the important things to the community? And I guess I just put it down as an area that we should be thinking about.
Okay.
I don't think with the way the, the federal government is spending money, it'll be too long before we all have a challenge. County resh, shared responsibilities and what I add under that area is are there functions that the counties perform that we could have mutual agreements to share work and save money on capital, personnel, right down the line? For example, our veteran officer serves Cedar and Knox County and a lot of Bonham County and probably a couple of other counties too.
Ours goes to Nebraska?
Absolutely.
I did not know that.
Yeah, well, they do. We don't, we don't, our veterans officer is, does not turn down any veteran that comes.
Well, I get that, but I thought they came here, not we went there.
You're exactly right, they come here.
Okay.
I think there's other areas that we could form agreements with, talking about highways and roads, shared equipment when you gotta do a chip seal job or gravel roads where you could utilize county trucks rather than have empty trucks sitting for a year. Does anybody want to vote for that?
For county shared responsibility? I think it's something that we should look into.
I'm gonna put that down as a one. Anybody else?
I think, I, I think I would say that's another one I'd vote for too, because
Okay.
if we're, you know, it just gives an opportunity for a broader reach for everything, you know? It's like we can, like I said, save the money, possibly even improve upon what we can do in our capabilities.
Well, I, I don't, I don't think we should, we should have to share our veteran service expense a hundred percent and serve Cedar and Knox County and Bonham County and Charles Mix County and any place where a veteran can get, get services, so.
I get that, but I also agree we shouldn't turn them away.
Yeah.
Well, no, yeah. Nobody's...
As long, as long as they come here, great.
The problem is, state law requires us to have a veteran service officer, and they provide, for us, you know, because we're a larger county, what, four thousand? That has gone up four hundred dollars this year, just so you guys are aware. But the smaller counties, they don't, you know, their, their veteran service does three or four different jobs, and a lot of times, they don't go to the training that they need to, to be able to help these guys, so they come here.
And I, I look at these kind of as formalized, formulated agreements, much as, what was it, the shared power agreement that we signed?
Yeah.
The other day, yeah.
Well, and I think about...
To save money.
Just a couple meetings ago with the contact center, too, you know?
Yep.
You know, we have their, they are coming up to utilize those services. It would be good to have the, you know, an agreement in place between the counties. And in any way, it helps out those smaller counties, and it makes sure that, you know, our costs are being covered.
Don, I think, I think that county shared responsibilities is very important, but I also think that as, we're all liaisons to different departments in the county, and I think that should, for instance, the highway department, that should be my responsibility to, to look at options, to work with Clay County, Bonham County, and Hutchinson and those.
Guess what?
And I'll come to you and ask for help when we need it.
Oh, guess what? Part two of this little deal is, we're gonna take the top four, and each one of you are gonna take one of them.
Okay.
Is that okay?
That's fine with me, Don. I'm good with anything.
Veteran services. I'm a veteran, and I support veteran services, and I, Dan, can I put you down for that?
Sure. What do, what do you want me to do with that?
No, no, I'm not giving you that assignment yet.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
I'm just bolting on the importance of it.
I think you should just assign that to them, and then let's move on to manufacturing.
Happy to do it.
Okay, manufacturing.
It's important, but it's mostly within the confines of the city.
And again, it's the idea of, of what the county can do to stimulate and help in manufacturing, same as in tourism. They're not, go out and develop a program on your own. It's what we can do to facilitate, to make the whole county better. Housing.
Well, I think all of us think it's important.
Yeah.
I think the problem is FEMA has tied our hands a little bit for everything east of town.
I think this is an area, kind of like Ryan said earlier, where we, this is where we should look at our zoning ordinance. For example, low-density rural residential, R1, right below Chalkstone Hill, minimum five-acre lot, right next to the city of Yankton. Now, does that make sense? Maybe it did twenty years ago when they assigned that, but I don't know if it makes sense anymore. Can that number go down? Two acres, maybe that would be a better approach. And then something else we did that we had a lot of success with, is we have a lot of properties that zoned rural transitional, and that's a minimum of a twenty-acre lot, if you want to do anything. Well, first off, you can do almost nothing on it. Second off, if you want to do anything, it's a minimum twenty-acre lot. And we had an initiative last year where we offered free rezones to anybody who wanted to do that, and then it, it got stopped, but I think that we should open that up again to free rezones, because then we take property that is really hard to develop into anything, and we turn it into something else. Then somebody has options to do that.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. That rural transitional zoning is really is sort of a zoning purgatory.
It is, you're exactly right.
Okay, so...
It's maybe something that we can look at.
Really, what I've heard so far on housing is that it's a planning and zoning issue.
I, I, I think if we want to make this easier, if we want to concentrate housing in, in the lake area, you know, south of fifty, that's probably something we need to do, is, you know, up, up in some of those areas, like on three-ten, on one side of the road, minimum five-acre lot. On the other side, it's a one-acre lot. That doesn't make sense to me. Why not make it, if we can reduce the, the size of the lots, we can have more lots there, and then the same people are using one road instead of twenty roads all over the county.
How many, how many acres do they have to have to have a septic tank?
Minimum is twenty thousand square feet per state bar.
Which is how much?
That's a little less than a half an acre. And that's, that would be our R3, and that's another thing we could discuss, is we have our R1, R2, R3. R1 is your five-acre lots, R2 is our one-acre lots, and then R3, like Riverside Acres, is half-acre lots. And maybe, and right now, our zoning ordinance, if you read it, kind of doesn't encourage R3 high-density rural. And...
Well, don't you have to have somebody wanting to build before you are horribly worried about R3?
Well, I think there are a lot of areas, for example, the White Crane Estates down there, those are all zoned, and then some of them aren't plotted yet, those are all zoned R2. So the minimum size they would have to have is one full acre. Otherwise, they gotta come in and get a variance from us, and the way our rules are, they discourage R3. But maybe, if we, we didn't discourage it and allowed it, you could really cut the lot sizes in half, which makes lots more affordable, and you can fit more lots in the same area.
I'd like to take a vote on housing. How many think housing is an issue? One? Dan? I am, also.
I think, I think it falls back, you know, to really develop housing, it goes back to the zoning and the roads, you know? If we don't have, you know, that's the other obstacle, is making sure that you have the roads out to these lots and everything like that, and covering all those things. And we've seen cases where developers are very hesitant to develop their own roads and stuff like that, and that becomes an issue, so it locks off some of the properties. So, I, I don't know, I feel like it's a, it's an important issue, but I think it falls back onto two other issues that are already there.
Okay. Government transparency.
Where is that on your list?
Oh, yeah, we added it.
Dan added that.
One, one thing that, that I know we had in the past is we, we had Facebook, and we've kind of gotten away from that, but I sign up for stuff at a lot of these conferences I go to, and Gary and I sat in on the creation of a, a company that was pitching the idea for an app. And I think that may be something we could look at to increase government transparency, where somebody could download a Yankton County app, we could host videos on there, we could post our agendas, we could post pretty much whatever we want, and it's a good communication. Everybody has a cell phone nowadays.
And who's, who's gonna do all this posting?
What's that? Are you volunteering, Wanda?
No.
Well, we, for example, we post, it, it gets pulled off of your website.
Well, why don't we just put it on the county website and call it a day?
Nobody uses a website anymore. People are going to apps. So if you're sitting at home and we issue, you know, on a county snow emergency like we had, it would come across on the app. It's just the way technology is progressing.
So I'd put that under advanced technology rather than government transparency.
That sounds like a Ryan thing.
Yeah. And I would be willing, District Three is actually talking about creating one, if you'd like to go visit with them.
Yeah.
They're excited about that, that idea, and maybe that's something we could better serve our constituents with.
I'm gonna pass on government transparency, because we're gonna talk a little bit about that on the commission organization and actions, so... Let's see, I've got ambulance service four. Detention services four. County shared responsibilities four. Advanced technology four. Is that what you all came up with? Would you agree? Oh, roads four. We got five areas that we, at least eighty percent of us felt were...
We had five, five of us sitting there.
It wasn't counting me. But I'll do one.
You're the one who came up with the list, so...
Okay, I guess my idea, and we'll touch on it when we go on to commission organization, is that each, each of us would take an area, and it would be our responsibility to work on that area and report back to the commission. We'll have an agenda item that says, I mean, if everybody agrees, we'll have an agenda item that says areas...
Strategic planning.
Yes, strategic planning and progress. And so we keep this in front of the public, so people know what we're placing our importance on, and, and move on from there. Does everybody agree to that?
Sure.
Sure.
Okay, ambulance, John?
I was figured on the roads.
I want roads. I don't want the ambulance.
Yes, you get the ambulance.
I don't want the ambulance. I'm gonna have to draw straws.
All right, I'll take roads.
I already took roads.
Okay, detention services. Wanda?
Fine, I wanted roads.
County shared responsibilities.
That sounds like Don.
I'll take that. Advanced technology. Ryan?
Sounds like I'm, I'm the person for that.
Dan?
So which one do I get? Jeez, thanks, guys.
Which one was it?
Ambulance services, Dan.
With that one, we're probably gonna need to set up a committee with the citizen rean- just discuss. We already had a, just a short conversation at the city-county planning meeting, and...
And the city is here.
Yeah, so there's, there's some support from the city on just having the discussion, which is encouraging, so keep you posted.
Any questions or comments from the public? Hearing none? Let's go on then to the commission organization and actions. I think we, first item, I'll read through the items, and then we'll come back to the initial one. A consent agenda, agenda item for open discussion at beginning or end of the meeting. Meeting time, executive sessions, department head recommendations, eight county meetings, positive culture, relationships between city-state, organization, and other counties, monthly department head meetings, celebrations, and customer service. We, we talked about the consent agenda, and my understanding was that no one thought we needed to have a consent agenda, so we'll cross that one off the list. The agenda item for open discussion would be the reports that each of us would give on progress on our specific areas of strategic planning. Meeting time, we agreed that it would be the same time as we've been doing it at six P.M. every other Tuesday, first and third Tuesdays of each month. Executive session.
Personnel matters and litigation have to be in executive session.
Personnel matters.
And litigation.
And litigation, yes.
Poor relief? I'm sorry? Poor relief? Well, I, yeah.
You know, on, on the poor relief issue, and I know I've brought this up in the past, is the paper we get has no identifying marks on it at all, you know, is it, is that something?
Individual name.
Yeah, it has no individual names, it's just X, Y, Z. You know, is that something we could do in the spirit of transparency and open meetings? And I, I know...
No, because we have to discuss why a, why county poor relief twenty-three dash sixteen doesn't meet the criteria. Either they aren't a resident, or they voluntarily made themselves indigent, or they had insurance. If we discuss those things out in the public, somebody could figure out who those people are, and the, the statute says nobody can know. So we can come out and say A, B, C, D, E, which is what we do, and we read them and say, approved, blah, blah, blah. If you want to have the list that says one, two, three, or four out in the public, so the public can, that's fine, but the discussion has to take place under state law, where people can't find out, much the same as people who apply for veterans' preferences on their real estate taxes, or disabled people. We don't get to know who those peoples are, because it's nobody's business. That's why it's done in a closed session.
I guess we talk about personnel matters as we've just now discussed, and I guess my point is, in an executive session, those are not to be talked to anybody outside the executive session.
That would seem to go without saying.
Well, it would.
Yeah, I get that.
I just want to make sure everybody knows that.
Well...
Okay, department head recommendations. I would, I would like to have a situation where whenever a department head attends a meeting and talks about a project, or whatever's going on in their department, that the department head makes a recommendation on yea or nay on what should be done. And I'm saying that from the standpoint of, for example, in the highway department, I want to know what the experts think we should do before I make a decision and say yea or nay on whether they should do it. We pay them extra money to be a department head, and I think that's part of their responsibilities.
Well, I don't think that's a problem with the highway department. It may be a problem with other departments, so...
Wanda, I shouldn't have used the highway department? It could be any department in the county.
I get that.
Okay.
But Mike always tells what he thinks.
Eight, not always. Eight county meetings. I would hope that we could have a representation at every eight county meeting, and after that meeting, the representatives come back and report to what activities are going on in the other counties that are applicable to our county.
We have pretty good attendance. I usually go to every one. I know Gary was, actually the president right now of our eight county. It's up in March, Don, if you're interested.
Oh, I'm going.
Put your name in. I'm not able to make it to the next one.
Parker, right?
Yeah, they, they are very informative. They are very informative, so...
So I plan to be there, so I pretty made my schedule work.
I would like to create an atmosphere of a positive culture in the county. We have lots of rural-city complex that doesn't do any of us any good, really. We're a small county, a small twenty-three thousand people. We need to work together and keep a positive culture on what's going on, what we're doing. Relationships, to me, they're very important with city-state organizations and other counties. I think we can do a lot better by having closer relationships with the city of Yankton, especially this, the state... Especially this, the state. Organizations such as Thrive or other organizations that have application of their. Services in the county and other counties. I'm going to plan on monthly department head meetings and. I think a main part of those department head meetings, my plan would be to. Discuss different leadership strategies. So that our department heads. Get exposure to leadership issues. My understanding is that we've had four, four people go to. Our tech on a leadership training program that started and would intend to get all the department heads. In that process. Under celebrations. I think this is an area that when you have successful. Departments or successful people that are doing really exceptional things. They should celebrate that success and pass it on. That could be as, as small as having a donuts once, once every year, or once every four months or whatever. But some kind of celebration to tell the team and the staff. That they're doing a great job and they're appreciated. And I think the last item on the list is customer service, and I think we need to continually. Remember as commissioners, that we're ultimately here to serve the customers in the county. And we need to do things in our service that improve that service. Did anybody else have any actions that they'd like to add to that list?
No, sir.
Okay. Okay, the last section that I wanted to talk about is what I'm gonna call my expectations. And as a chair of the county, I think it's important that. I let people know. Where I stand on issues. My expectations with all county people are to honestly. Deal with customers and their employees on their team and that they have absolute integrity. In all issues. And that's a challenging, challenging, challenging expectation, but. I think we're going to. Be faced with that as we go through the year. My second expectation is that we have transparency in every issue that we can. Within the county. Work environment. There are certain things that we absolutely are not able to, to. Share with the public. And those things won't change. But within this group here, I would expect transparency in what's going on, how you're. How you're working between each other in our, on our team and how we meet the public. I would expect our department heads to be good managers. And good leaders and to know the difference. Being a major difference in those two items. I would expect collaboration between all department heads. And collaboration within agreements with other counties and other political. Civic organization, cities and organizations. I'd expect no silos. And I had to define that, cuz I guess it's a term I learned in my previous job. It's not where you store ground up corn. In the county. It's, silo is a. One department that sets up their little operation and they do what they want and. They're. They're totally separate from the total team concept. I expect amongst department heads and, and employees, team respect. We need to support each other in our operations and our teams need to support each other. And. The next item I said is a respect for time. I think some of our meetings are longer than they need to be. And we're holding up department heads sometimes. For long periods of time and we're holding up the public when they want to appear here sometimes. For a significant period of time when they wouldn't have to be here. I would expect that department heads and we as commissioners. Do not get engaged in micromanaging. We hire these people to do a job, we need to hold them accountable for doing the job. And. If they aren't capable of it, then we need to change. Next item is empower department heads and hold them accountable, but it's kinda covered before. And then the last item is strategic thinking, and I think we need to on a. Daily basis continually think about how we can serve our customers better. In going into the future. And. Our world is changing so fast. We need, we need to be not saying that's how we did it for the last thirty years, we need to say. How are we gonna serve the people in the next couple of years? Does anybody have any comments on either my expectations or on commission organizations and actions?
No, sir.
Public? Hearing none?
We're back to public comment.
Back to public comment. Anybody from the public like to make a comment? Come on, come on.
Maybe there's something we missed, you guys, this is a time for input.
Well, yeah, get to come up to the podium, turn the microphone on, Dan.
Just, sir, give us your name and address, please.
My name is Dan Schenkel, I'm Utica Township Chair and I'm. My address, I guess, is Yankton, I guess, you know, so you guys know where I'm at, basically. Anyway, I guess my thing would be you guys. Starting out, a lot of you are new, some of you aren't, but y'all know. We got terrible problems with roads out there, blacktop, and you talked about that. And you're talking about housing and stuff, there's. Two hundred, two hundred million dollars the state's got, they're divvying up for housing. And for infrastructure, I guess. People out in the country, they're, you're talking about building out in the country and. They complain about gravel roads, dust, whatnot, you know, snow removal. And the more houses you get out there, the worse that complaint's gonna be. Just throwing that out there, this thing, what you're talking about, getting along and stuff like that. It's gonna be quite the thing if you keep building more houses out in the country. So. I think it can be done. There's a brand-new highway out there that we built to go to Napa Junction, you guys didn't even mention Napa Junction. There's stuff that needs to be built out there, you know, you're talking about manufacturing. There's stuff can be built out there. I guess. Otherwise, I mean, thinking about what goes on in this office, selection integrity is a big thing.
Good point.
Need to get rid of them damn machines? Okay, and, and. I think it's a big problem. The state of Arizona, their whole government is upside down right now, and I'm not so sure South Dakota's not far behind, so.
Well, do they?
Y'all think about that.
Do they use IDs, voter identification in Arizona?
They.
Or do you just show up?
You just show up, I think.
Well, that's a problem.
Yeah.
And their machines are hooked to the internet, which ours are not.
That's left to be proven yet.
That they're not hooked to the internet?
They're not hooked to the internet.
They are not, they are not hooked to the internet.
Nobody has proved that to the public, so.
And what does it take to prove to the public that the machine is not hooked to the internet?
Open it up.
What do you mean, open it up? I don't understand.
I want somebody that's got that capability to open up that machine. You need to have the public be able to see, basically, you gotta have an independent person come in and open that machine up and show us what's in it. Does it have a cellphone in it? You don't know.
Is that what you're worried about, that it has a cellphone in it?
A router.
A router in it?
Whatever you wanna call it. So like you talked about Arizona a little bit, Arizona's sheriff's department and all the sheriff's departments in the whole United States got federal money. And they have a back door through the sheriff's computer system to get into these computers. There's all kinds of stuff coming out about this, it's purely, it's all purely conspiracy theory, I know.
I, I add election integrity to our list of areas for strategic planning, and I think, I think it's a great topic for you to bring up, I appreciate that.
Okay, anyway. The thing about the housing, I guess, that's my big thing.
And the housing probably is closely tied with what goes on in planning and zoning.
I suppose we could.
It would not be a meeting without Mr. Johnson.
A RF meter over the whole machine, just to show, you know, make sure that, yeah, there is no signals going in or out of the machine and we can do that.
Can you get that up on a big monitor that says, you know, that shows a spike or something?
I can see if I can pull something from my office.
Can you tell us?
Mr. Johnson?
Louis Johnson Volin. I personally like your idea of a business manager. Because I think there's. There's no sense in turning down anything that can save the county money. And if you can hire a private business to do something cheaper than you can with your own workforce, why not hire the private company? I like the idea of sharing work and equipment with other counties. Anybody that's ever been able to do that, seems like they get along a lot better, but it, and I realize it takes a lot of coordination and. Okay, here, when are you gonna use it, here's where we wanna use it, it takes give and take. That part I like. Economic development, again, said Napa Junction's an excellent place to start, there is a place out there that has rail access and highway access. And if something else would come in, I think it would be very easy to finish the concrete road to the Tabor Road and build that up going back east to eighty-one. For a year-round low-load limit load, or road. The housing issue, the only thing I have, the small lots, I don't have a problem. West of town, I do have a problem with pollution. Because we have all those septic tanks out there and on lighter, sandier soil, and if I remember right, they don't even recommend. Septic tanks out there. Because it's so porous.
I don't think it's been denied.
And it's gonna cost a lot to put a sewer system out there. The other thing is, and I realize not everybody wants to live in a small town, because most of the small towns anymore, you're lucky if they have a pop machine. But they have sewer and water. The city or the school system tried selling, what, five acres here last week for development?
Did they sell it? Was it sold?
I know, and they didn't get a bid, cuz nobody wanted to pay what they could. I visited with some people that were looking at developing that. And they were scared that they'd have close to fifty thousand dollars a lot in it. And if they didn't get it sold right away, they'd lose money, so they walked away from it. And now I suppose the school district will have to have it reappraised at a, at a lower price and see if they can get somebody to come in then. But. The lot, by the time you get the sewer, the water, the curb and the gutter, and the streets in, you spend a lot of money. And a lot costs you probably four times more than what a house did forty years ago. And like Dan was saying, houses here and there out in the country, you wanna use zoning, okay, this district is set up for housing. This is for bigger places, this is for smaller places. If you have ten houses, I'm just gonna say on eighty acres. You suppose it'd be cheaper for the school to send a bus out to those ten houses? Or to put one or two houses in each township all the way through and let the school bus drive clear around the whole county? And that affects your tax dollars too. If you wanna have organized growth, let's organize it a little bit. And yes. We've been around here long enough, my daughter found some old articles where my grandparents, my grandfather's brother and sister. Were at some meeting and they said, yeah, when they first got here, the stagecoach went past our place to go to Sioux Falls. And I know my grandpa always said we were on the ancient Sioux Falls wagon train trail. They watched the Indians go through. We've been here for quite a while. And the only thing consistent is the fact that everything keeps changing. Looked to buy a new honey wagon. I was flabbergasted to see what the. Bill for the computer on the moneresspreader was. And I thought, geez, huh, when I was a kid, a computer on a moneresspreader was the least I worried about. The technology is out there, and the other thing I wanted to touch on is transparency. We need to be way, way, way more transparent. And department heads, you should give them a list of things to do. And you don't have to have them in front of everybody, but call them in and say, how'd you do on our list? Did you do the performance or didn't you? If you did, great, if you didn't, why didn't you? If it's beyond their control.
Louis, we do that through performance evaluations.
Pardon?
We do that through performance evaluations.
Yeah, you know, and. Anyway, I will quit now, Don, so, but I'm glad to see you had this meeting.
Thank you. Public comment? It's over then, I guess, Louis, you were the last. Nobody else? I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
I would move to adjourn.
Second?
I'll second that.
Have a motion and second discussion, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, the same motion carries. Thank you guys for coming, appreciate it.